Good evening. It is Wednesday, April 9th, 2025. Welcome to the Town of Carmel Town Board Meeting. Tonight is a work session and we have a special presentation at the beginning of the meeting. Everyone, I call this meeting to order, and if everyone please rise, face the flag for the pledge of legions. Councilman Lombardi will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation of indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Justice that we remain standing for moral science to remember those men and women who are fighting for our freedom around the world, who brought us with the blanket of freedom that we live under each and every night.
Thank you. So it is my pleasure-
I know you missed it last time.
Oh, him? Oh, the blanket. So it's my pleasure to ask our county executive, Kevin Byrne, to please come up to the podium. The county executive is going to give us a short synopsis on the state of the county.
Well, thank you Supervisor, and I promise, while it's not that short, it will be abbreviated and will not be a repeat of the hour-plus-long presentation I gave at A. Sendico in March. But I want to thank you Supervisor Kuzari for allowing me the opportunity to present to you, the members of the board, in the town that I call home. I want to thank also Councilman Kearns. It was one of his ideas to ask if at one point in the future I could come by and give a little bit of an update. What more convenient time than to do a wrap-up with a more localized state of the county for the people of Carmel? I also want to introduce some of our team at the executive office. We have our communications director, who does not just work with me and my team, but he literally touches every single department in county government, whether it's the Health Department, Social Services, Bureau of Emergency Services, and that's our comms director, a Mahoak native, Chris Formisano, and our new chief of staff, newly minted, we snatched him from State Senator Rob Rollison's office, and that's Dane Pascacello. So they make us look good and keep things moving along. I appreciate them being here. The state of Putnam County has never been stronger as we always strive to serve every Putnam County resident with a more affordable, accountable, and accessible government that serves us all. Affordability is very much a key focus area for my administration. Since I took office as your county executive, we have never raised taxes. And in fact, after cutting a tax levy in our first budget, in the second budget, we continued our tax cuts and lowered the county portion of the property tax rate to its lowest level in 18 years. We also, for the first time, eliminated sales tax on clothes and shoes under $110 with a special exemption by zeroing out sales tax on those items that are seen as more regressive purchases. I believe if given the opportunity, it's something we should do to make permanent in the future. We've bolstered our property tax stabilization fund upwards to $7.5 million, which allows this administration and future administrations to rely less on property taxes in future years. Sales tax revenue is clearly one of the most substantial and important sources of revenue to fund county government and its operations. Legislature, the legislature made recent actions this past week to cut the sales tax rate, which I believe is ill-conceived and sacrifices over $5 million in revenue that will force us inevitably, either in the near future or in future years, to rely more on property taxes. I remember back in 2007 when the county government raised the property tax levy, not just the rate, the levy, by 19%. I remember in 2008 when it had to increase the property tax levy by 27%. I want to leave those years in the past. We have a tax cap which protects us in part, but it really is strong financial management for not just for this year, but for future years. And in fact, by prioritizing our spending, by being good fiscal stewards of your taxpayer dollars at my state of the county in March, I announced it is my intention to introduce in my next county budget the largest property tax cut in Putnam County history. This is in part based on the feedback that we received from a community tax survey. Members of the legislature debated amongst themselves about what is the appropriate tax rate to extend. I believe the people that need to be most engaged are our residents. So rather than just debate, discuss with politicians, we opened it up online. And within just one short week, we had over 822 people respond. Now, it may not be scientific, but it is a survey that got engagement from every town. And 72% of all the people that participated in this survey want a major property tax cut. Go figure. I think if you asked anyone that, even without a survey, they probably would have told you that. But I think it's important to note that when we're talking about cutting taxes, when we're talking about relying on sources of revenue, that we also have to be mindful about the future financial obligations that our county government has. And to that end, I wanted to digress a little bit from the PowerPoint and bring up a whiteboard, just to kind of spell some things out, if you'll indulge me for a moment.
So, when we're planning out our budget, we have to look for this year. We're living in fiscal year 2025. This is our future financial obligations. Fiscal year '25, let's go to '26, '27. Let's not fall this over. We're good. We're not falling. Yes, please have that. Thanks, Kevin.
Your name?
Chief of Staff. '28, '29. And then we're gonna do, these are the categories. And I'll leave a different view so you can see them all. And this, total. This is like a finance mirror badge when you see us, right? So, the reality is, when we're funding some of these categories, it gets compounded year over year over year. So if you don't have a revenue source to fund these operating expenses, you're going to draw from the general fund. If you have a pretty healthy fund balance in Putnam County Government, but it doesn't replenish itself, and if you draw it down without revenue to supplant it, inevitably you're going to create a hole. So just to show, one of the biggest ones, obviously, is salaries. You're gonna hear me talk a little bit about our budgets and our unions. When I took office, every collective bargaining unit either had a short-term contract or was operating out of a contract. The PPA was operating out of no contract when I took office. To date, we have now settled contracts with all four collective bargaining units. That's for the corrections officers, the police, the PPA, our mid-level management, which is BOHA, and the largest collective bargaining unit is CSEA. The cost, the new, the cost for new increases for just '26, or for '25 this year, it's going to be $1.5 million. That's the new dollars enough to spend to make those contracts whole, the fundamental obligation. Then you go back into 2027, it gets compounded. It's 1.5, then we're doing that expense again. So now, total cost, 3.1. It's compounded yet again, 4.8. See how it goes up? 3%, and then the 3% is 2%. Now it's compounded again. Where are we at in '29? 6.5, oh, sorry, '28. 6.5. You add them all up, it gets you to just shy of 1.5, 3, 4.6. This adds up to close to 16 million. So check this method. Then we go to health insurance. Health insurance, unsurprising, the town government, same thing. Health insurance costs, the effect from one year to the next, 1 million. And the next year is compounded. It goes again, again, again. The total cost for the four-year cycle is approximately just under 7 million dollars. Retirement, same thing that you guys deal with over here. Adding that up, it's a compounded increase over four years, just under 5 million dollars. Capital plan. This is something, I don't know how the town has been doing this, but because of our healthy general fund balance, we have been able to fund our robust capital plan without any borrowing. That means we're taking money each and every year from our general fund to fund that in the budget. Now that's about $6 million every year. Six times four over four years, it's about 24 million dollars. Now I've gone on with other expenses, seven thirty cases for our DSS. If that's been happening over four years, it's about a million dollars. If the county changes how we, the county fully share of health insurance contribution, which is a big topic, that's gonna cost probably at least a million dollars a year. That adds up, the four years is 4 million. Contracts are going to look at the energy costs, inflation, pre-K intervention services, all those things add up. Those are all new, largely fixed costs. But just looking at the ones I put on here, 14 million plus 5 million, that's 19 million, plus 7, that's 28 million. 28 plus 4, sorry, I'm trying to write that here, 12 for 52 million dollars. So that's like, that's just a snapshot of some of the financial exposure over the next four years. Well, this is it with 52 million dollars. Knowing that it's significantly more, that's 52 million that we have to fund for the next several, next four years. Now, you may have heard that $90 million is in the undersigned general fund. 90 million has yet to be ordered, but when we look at our 90 million, and that's always been a big point for our friends in town and local government, because they see that money, want it to be either spent or we can reduce the tax levy. We typically, we have to refund the general fund accounts for capital projects. That's minus 6 million. We have to minus half a million for insurance money that we fall from. And if your mind is saying the 52 million over the course of the next several years, you're already drawing that down substantially, where you're gonna be less than 40 million dollars. It's 52, 6, 58, close to 60 million, going down to close to 30 million dollars when you're on the side. That is the issue when we talk about the need for a sustainable source of revenue, because if you use your savings account, your general fund, as your main source of operations, eventually you're gonna create a giant hole that we need to fill. And in part, that's how you get back to the 2007, 2008 number. There was an awful economy back then, but the reality is, we don't want to create a hole that we later have to fill with a large property tax. I just think sometimes seeing is a better way to visualize why it's important that we maintain our sales tax rate and have a sustainable source of revenue to support the whole government and operations. And where we can partner with our towns and villages, I think we want to explore.
I appreciate your time and indulgence with me, just trying to break that down. And I'm sure there might be, there might be questions about that later. I talked about affordability. We also talk about accessibility in my administration. When we talk about accessibility, we often talk about government transparency. So as your county executive, we host a lot of town halls. I see Robert Kearns, Councilman Kearns. He hosts a lot of constituent forums as well. To date, each year I've been your county executive, I've hosted a town hall in every single town that calls, that's part of Putnam County. I've livestreamed my executive public hearings, which is something new and was never done by any county executive. When a local law is passed by the legislature, before I get to sign or veto it, I have to hold a public hearing. It was never livestreamed. It was just in the executive's conference room. I believe in transparency, so we livestream those meetings. I ran on creating a budget transparency website. And it's one of the things that we accomplished with one of our vendors called ClearGov. If you go to putnamcountyny.gov, you can now see a clearer image of what our Putnam County budget looks like. You can drill down by department, by division. You can see the increases year to year. You can see personnel salaries. You can see our capital plan over the next six years. And I think this is important because it justifies the taxpayers where their money is being spent. But if they have a better idea, they think we can do better, it encourages them to share it with us. If you can come up with an idea for to save your county government taxpayer money, I'm all ears. That's very much the attitude we take. When I talk about transparency, I also try to bring back a practice that I did when I was in the state legislature. We all, for the most part, have to file what's called a financial disclosure form when we take elected office. When I was in the state legislature, it was mandated that it be posted online for all to see, with some minimal redactions. That is not a mandate on local government. It's not a mandate on county government. But I believe for folks to be able to identify a conflict, they need to at least see the disclosure. Otherwise, how can anyone actually be aware of it? So taking my own initiative, my financial disclosure form is on the Putnam County government website for all to see. Some accomplishments from last year that I want to highlight. We hosted our first youth business market. This was a response to the action of some overzealous bureaucrats in upstate New York and in other states. They were shutting down children's lemonade stands because of silly reasons. They didn't have a health permit. They didn't, they weren't paying sales tax, and a bunch of other nonsense. The idea came about with some communities hosting children's entrepreneur markets. So we very much adapted that with our Health Department, Youth Bureau, Tourism, and Parks Division. We hosted this market where children ages 5 to 17 could create and sell their own creative products and really embrace entrepreneurship. We had over 600 visitors on our first event with over 70 youth vendors from all over the tri-state area. We had people from the Five Boroughs coming up, with people from Connecticut, Dutchess, Orange, Rockland. Our next youth business market event is scheduled for Sunday, June 8th, at Tilly Foster Farm. If you know anyone, or you have young kids yourself, please check it out at putnamcountyny.gov/ybM. Another big capital project that we're actually gonna be celebrating, we would have done it last weekend if we could have, but the weather didn't cooperate, is the completion of our brand-new fire and EMS training facility. People ask me what this county government do, what this government do. I think every level has a responsibility for public health and safety. I can think of no better project to invest taxpayer dollars in than a training facility to take care of our brave men and women who are first responders and are both fire and EMS community. So we will have a grand opening, hopefully, in the coming weeks, if not this month, early next month, when the weather cooperates. I should, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge this was a use of ARPA money, as well as a state grant from Senator Peter Harkum. Another major project specific to the town of Carmel is our Fair Street project. I'm sure you guys get calls about this. Following through my commitment, after Putnam Valley's Peaksco Hollow Road project fiasco, and I'll call it that because the prior contractor walked off the job a month before I took office. We've made major progress. That job is largely complete now. But we learned from our past mistakes. One of the first things I did as county executive was host a public forum for the people of Putnam Valley. So before major construction commenced on Fair Street, we did the exact same thing. I think it's important to set expectations, answer questions, and let people know where they can go to as a resource for information. We actually created a new website on the county page, and this was pulling from my experience in the state legislature. Most of us probably don't like to crow about the New York State DOT. Usually there's more problems than solutions there. But this was a solution that they had. They had a website that gave a relatively current update on projects. We did the same thing. If you go to putnamcountyny.gov-publicworks罡ex, you're gonna see a list of various public works projects that show where there might be a delay. It also shows who won the bid. It shows, and right there, there's Fair Street. You can see a large list of the projects, whether it's delayed on time. But if you scroll, if you click Fair Street, Chris is gonna help me out here, all the way in there, right? That's the key for, if there's delays, which we don't want. We don't want delays, but it happens. Learn more. You'll see the summation of the project, the location of the project. But here you'll actually see a link to the community engagement forum. So anyone that missed that forum, that wants to learn more, they can watch it themselves. Currently, as of the most recent update from DPW Commissioner Tommy Fury, utility relocations are ongoing in tandem with construction work. A majority of stormwater basins have been completed. Drain work from John Simpson Road to Dolores Drive is in progress. Full-depth pavement restoration has begun at John Simpson Road. Three culverts are being replaced in the coming months, which will require periodic lane closures. Our contractor, G and FIA, and utility companies have agreed to begin work near the high school as soon as school is out for the summer to hopefully avoid interference with school operations and transportation. I know that's something that's important to a lot of moms and dads here in the town of Carmel. Drewville Road construction is another big project. Drewville Road will be paved this spring. The roundabout at Drewville and Stonely Avenue has been talked about for many years. It's scheduled to go out to bid next month. I mentioned about the successful completion of all of our union contracts. Another initiative that we talk about in my administration is Think Differently. Think Differently is very much a call to action to change the way we think about those with disabilities. We do this regardless of physical ability or intellectual and developmental disabilities. So in Putnam County, one thing that we did was, I thought, very low-hanging fruit, but no one ever funded it or put it as a priority project. If you went into the county office building, you wanted to go see the county executive, the county clerk, the legislature, the DA, you wanted to talk to our purchasing department, and you had trouble with stairs, or if you were in a wheelchair, you were directed to go around back by the newer courthouse, get buzzed in by a police officer, walk in past a maintenance closet, go into the elevator to get to the first or third or second floors, just to be able to engage with your government. No handicap ramp, no handicap door, not even an ADA-accessible bathroom on the first level. We changed that. We made it part of our capital plan. And we just recently, last month, completed a handicap ramp, handicap accessible door, and a fully compliant ADA bathroom on the ground level. We also have announced a more ambitious goal. I'm very excited about this. A new Think Differently pre-K campus. I'm not trying to put anyone in a spot here, but honestly, before I got involved in government, ran for office, I didn't realize this was a function or mandated function of county government. How many people know what Early Intervention Services is, or CSPE, Special Education? This is something that is for ages, early interventions, 1 to 3. CSPE is 3 to 5. This is before someone with special needs gets into the school district system. It is the county government's obligation to provide these services. Now, right now, we have a very big challenge. Those young children, ages 3 to 5 years old, who need that service, they don't have it here in Putnam County. The county government is paying agencies outside of the county, some as far as Austin, White Plains, you name it. And they, in some cases, are waiting on a school bus for an hour, almost two hours, to get the education that they are supposed to get. Now, an interesting opportunity presented itself with the advent of universal pre-K education in school districts. We are pushing for a Just Think Differently pre-K campus with a braided model of funding, supported by school district funding, provided by the state, as well as the county's special education pre-K program to offer a truly innovative, interactive place for an early learning environment over in Patterson. The beauty of this is not only does it provide better outcomes and a better opportunity for our young children, it cuts down on transportation times, and it has the potential to significantly reduce- to significantly reduce the cost to the taxpayers of Putnam County. Another interesting and very exciting, uh, uh, project that was near completion, and we're excited about this year, is a new veterans museum at our Putnam County Veterans Memorial Park. Uh, that is in part, uh, doable because we received a $50,000 state grant from Assemblyman Matt Slater. Um, also, on the business and economic development front, a lot of exciting things countywide, I know there's always exciting prospects here in the town of Carmel, but Ascentico, now our largest private sector employer, completed its 60,000 square foot expansion, a multimillion dollar effort. Magazino over on the western side of the county is an Italian art, um, facility, has completed a major expansion there. Lesser Evil, now seemingly associated with Hershey, if you've read that, uh, is a new tenant with the distribution center off Pugsley Road. And we have, uh, more exciting progress on Brewster Yards also in Brewster. Uh, we've had some very, uh, exciting, uh, productive conversations with the farming community at a roundtable earlier in March, on March 21st, exploring updates for the future of farming, as well as committing to fully funding a new farming protection plan, something that's drastically needed in Putnam County. And before I close, one of the last things is next year, hopefully the town, villages, uh, and Putnam County will join together to celebrate the 250th anniversary of our nation's independence with the American Revolution. Uh, I tapped, uh, two, uh, renowned individuals of Putnam County that were, are going to help lead our voluntary committee. Uh, that is none other than the former governor, the Honorable George Bataki, Putnam County resident, and a very strong community advocate, uh, from Phillips Town Garrison, George Whipple. Well, more, more are welcome, no one is excluded. We want as many participants to, uh, to get involved. And quite frankly, we're looking forward to unveiling a sync, uh, synchronized calendar that includes all the events from the various local historical societies, uh, town historians, and centralize it in a place for people to go to get, uh, learn, get information and learn about more activities. Uh, we have also a very exciting initiative, we want to have a capital fundraising campaign to renovate and restore the beautiful statue on Lake Lenida, which is the seat of Putnam County, uh, but obviously the hamlet of Carmel. Uh, we want to renovate the statue of Sybil Luddington, which is very much the heroine of Putnam County, even though it is named after General Israel Putnam. Um, just to close, I, I, I could, I've gone on long enough, I could go on for much longer if I wanted to talk about the nearly 700 county employees, 27 divisions or departments of Putnam County government. Uh, but thankfully, our administration, as part of our transparency agenda, has put each and every single one of those, uh, annual reports provided by our departments, which are presented to the legislature online. So every single town board member, every supervisor, every Putnam County resident, every interested party across Putnam County or New York State can go online and read about the great work that our team is doing. Uh, in conclusion, I like to say that Putnam County consists of many different people with differing opinions and ideas on how best to govern, and that is very much normal. Uh, and that's typically a reflection of any governing body. My administration continues to believe that people with different ideas, views, and backgrounds always have an opportunity to work together to achieve a common goal. Today, you've heard about some of the successes and goals of my administration, none would be possible without your support. I believe that we can pass the largest property tax cut in county history, lower the cost of living for everyone, care for and support our most vulnerable residents, and build on our victories to invite a better, more prosperous tomorrow. There is only one Putnam, one New York, one America, and I will say, there's only one Carmel. So let us then continue this important work together. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the board or any members of the public may have.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you very much.
Kevin, I just want to thank you for coming out tonight, you know, um, I think everyone up here, we appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule to come here and lay out your plan. Um, I know we've been going back and forth, asking for some representation to show up, so we appreciate you coming here and, and laying out a, you know, a, a plan for the future, you know? It's nice to see that you guys are, are working hard for the people of not just Carmel, but Putnam County. I also did like your little diagram with the sales tax, that was, that hit right on the head, I was, I really appreciated that, so thank you.
You got it. I could, I could elaborate if you want, but I don't think you want me to.
No.
It's, the reality is, that, what I would say is...
Cause you said no.
No. I'm not going to grab that. Our property tax levy is just about 46 million. The sales tax that was projected in the 25 budget is about just over 79 million.
Wow.
So, the, sales tax adjusts based on the economy, right? And based on consumer behavior, right? We don't know what will happen, uh, based on decisions that are being made right now at global levels. Um, state and federal aid is another big source of revenue. We don't know what's going to happen there based on some of the, I'm sorry, bonehead decisions that come out of Albany. If we, if some of that's funding is jeopardized, that's a big problem. Um, so those are the numbers that we have to fund government, and we are fortunate with a healthy general fund balance, but that is a static number. It doesn't go up based on like, like, like a regular tax levy can go up, or sales tax, it's finite. And if you spend it down, it doesn't just magically regenerate.
It's basic, I cannot...
Thank you, county executive, I appreciate you coming. We'll have you back.
You're very welcome. Thank you, guys. And people.
I think you scared everyone away. At least, uh, we probably had a holiday where...
My pleasure.
Glad to come back more.
So, yes. So, so I asked the board to review the, uh, March 5th, 12th, and 19th minutes that, uh, Alice Daley, our clerk, has provided to you. If our town controller, I guess we don't have any place for you. Yeah, that's wonderful. Marianne Maxwell is going to, uh, consider budget revisions for 2025.
Thank you. Yes, good evening. Uh, so for the first quarter of 2025, I'm going to go over the budget revisions and the general fund first. Uh, number one, we're providing for the payout of accrued time in the Justice Court, um, Department and the Assessor Staff Department, uh, total of $49,562. Uh, number two, we're providing for the purchase of two police vehicles, um, from insurance claims, and also the sale of auction, uh, vehicles. The total cost of the two vehicles is, um, $104,061. Uh, number three, we're providing for accident, police accident repairs also from insurance claims. Uh, number four, we're providing for the purchase of the properties, um, of the street. So the total, uh, cost of the property, the, what we owed on the property was $1,095,000. Um, this came from the capital fund balance. Uh, number five, we're providing for overtime and expense, expenses from grant funding. Now, this came from the accreditation grant in the police department, so that was a total of $9,000 resolution. I came to the board, uh, last month, um, with funds that were left over in the 24 budget, and we brought them forward to 25. So that's basically this budget revision here. Uh, the last one on this page, number 12, we're transferring for the engineering consultant cost. Um, this is coming from the engineering staff personals, uh, the staff line into the consultant line, that's $84,000. On page two, we're transferring for the salary costs of a temporary position in the Central Service Department, uh, per authorizing resolution, and that's a transfer of $18,000, um, from the assessor staff line. Number 14, we're transferring for construction management engineering services. This is coming from the contingency line, um, that's $40,000. This, um, was a resolution that you guys passed to assist with the, uh, building grounds improvements, the engineering services to assist with that. So that was $40,000. Uh, number 15, we're transferring for the electrical prevention, preventative maintenance program at town hall, um, that was $6,900, that's also coming from the contingency line. Um, also from the contingency line is, um, $4,025, that's to cover the taxes and assessments on the buildings up the street. Okay, so that is coming from the contingency line. Um, the contingency line now has $35,000, I think I had emailed you guys earlier this week, uh, that has $35,000 left. I think we talked about some other things that we were going to be using for that, so just wanted to keep you update, updated with that. Um, number 18, we're transferring for highway admin overtime and temporary staff, a total of $5,100. Uh, number 22 on this page, we're transferring for generator project engineering services. This is coming from various funds, various water and sewer district funds, as well as the town hall, um, fund. So that is going, um, also coming from the contingency line of $13,100. Uh, on the bottom of this page, in the highway fund, we're providing for a payout of accrued time from, uh, an employee that had, um, had retired or resigned, uh, that's $11,181. And on the bottom of this page, which is, which is where we're providing for the machinery capital cost, uh, for the sale of the dump truck from the highway fund to the general fund, that's the $50,000. And on page three, um, in the middle of the page is the treatment of the PFOAs, that's a total of $46,000 that we're still funding, um, the cost for the PFOAs. So we're basically just transferring money into that, um, into that, the treatment of PFOA lines, lines. We don't know what this project is going to become of, you know, but we're working with the consulting engineer to get a better idea if this is going to become a capital project, you know, instead of just continuing, continuously funding it from the cap, from the operating fund. So, um, that's a total of $46,000. Uh, in the techno, technology capital fund, I talked about this earlier, we're providing for the equipment costs for the Motorola project. Um, this is basically accepting the, the transfer in from the general fund to fund that, the balance on that project. And then in the Stokum Capital Fund, the FEMA, um, project, um, for Stokum Culvert, that's, um, $515,000, um, coming from federal aid, uh, FEMA federal aid, to cover that project engineering cost. And that's pretty much it. If anybody has any other questions?
Thank you, Marianne.
Okay.
Thanks, we'll, we'll see you at Brown and Brown. Uh, next up is our police chief, Anthony Hoffman. Purchase of some Panasonic's?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight. I have one item for your consideration, and like you said, Mr. Supervisor, it is the purchase of two laptop computers for our police department vehicles. As the board is aware, and as the controller just said, we just had to replace two vehicles due to accidents at the end of the year. And in reviewing the equipment for those, Lieutenant Brown advised that the computers in those cars were obsolete, we've used them a couple times over. Uh, I believe we actually purchased them before my tenure started and, at the end of 2020. Uh, so he recommended that we purchase new computers. Uh, they were starting to fail, we had some issues with connectivity with the modems. So, we put out, uh, requests for quotes, and out of the three, uh, vendors, we got back, uh, from our, usually our ongoing vendor, Island Tech Services, I'm sure you're aware, Mr. Supervisor, you dealt with them when you were a chief. For the Panasonic Toughbook computers and all the ancillary equipment for the two computers, the cost would be $13,993.80. This, uh, would be paid for partially out of our equipment line and our budget, and then if we need any funding from the sale of our auction vehicles, we can, we'll ask controller to transfer stuff into that. But I think right now we'll be able to cover it with our equipment line, we have that earmarked from our 25 budget, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Thanks.
Questions? Okay, uh, if I just have three, a second of your time, three quick announcements, it is the 30th anniversary of the disappearance of Robin Murphy, I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. This case is still being investigated by our department. Uh, our detectives, just a couple weeks ago, were in touch with an out-of-state agency following up on some leads and some information, so it's, it's certainly on the forefront of our, of our operations. Uh, we put out a post on our social media, uh, this afternoon, and I ask if anyone does have any information, just for our audience, to contact our detectives at 845-628-1300. And, uh, on a little bit of a lighter note, this Sunday is our medication take-back day, April 13th, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. We do have the box in our lobby, as you know, but these medication take-back days are usually very successful, and we end up with a couple of bags worth of unused medication that we can take out of the, uh, the stream and, uh, we don't, uh, put into our waterways. So, thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Next two items are Highway Superintendent Michael Stern. Going to school?
Back to school. Good evening, board. Uh, tonight I am requesting the authorization to attend Cornell University's Local Roads Program, AKA Highway School in Ithaca, New York, June 2nd through the 4th. Estimated costs are going to be 432 for three nights at the Hotel Ithaca, $125 registration fee, and $200 estimated in gas and meals, although that's probably very high. Uh, these costs are included in my 25 budget. Any questions on that?
Sounds like a fun time.
So I said, I don't eat much. Just got a bag of peanuts, thank you.
You're being Ivy Leaguer going to Cornell, huh?
Yeah, you know it.
Then you have your bids?
Yes, sir. Secondly, as there, you know, it is dwindling, but there continues to be some issues associated with supplies and deliveries, as well as scheduling and quality of materials, I am recommending that some of the materials be awarded to more than one vendor as follows. Item four, through Putnam Materials and Thale Industries, now these are two different types that we usually get, but we're not going to really even have to use them this year at all. That's in a, in a dire need just because of all the stuff we made last year and that we crushed from our supply. Uh, Crush Gravel will be awarded to Putnam Materials and Thale as well. Tree fellin' and trimming, we're going to, to do both companies based on if one company, if it's an emergency, can't get out there in time, and some of the equipment needs. That will be to Amstead Tree and New England Property Maintenance. Our drainage pipe, polyethylene drainage pipe, will be to Carmel Wind Water, Chumung Supply, and Expanded Supply. Obviously, state bid, all the same price from all of them, it really depends on who has what in stock at, at the time. And our precast knockout catch basins and framing grates, and that will be to Carmel Wind Water and to Expanded Supply as well. Again, both really just based off of needs, if they have what we need, or if it's going to, sometimes they were up to a six and eight week lead time on some of these things, so, you know, it's, it has caught up a lot better, and both companies are excellent to work with.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Is there one with the, the tree fellin' and trimming? Are they going to go like in that order, the Amstead Tree and then New England, or you go, are you going to go with the lowest one first?
The lowest one will be the general one. Um, but that's not always the best case, as, as you know, for some things. It's just, we will go with Amstead from, I mean, for New England for most of it, but if we need the big crane, that's when the other company is, is lower in price by, you know, significantly. If we need a 148-foot crane or the 110-foot crane, they're a little lower in price, and I haven't seen them, you know, do a bad job yet, and neither of them have, so it really is just going to depend on the job, and, and if it's an emergency, if one can't get out there sooner than the other one.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any further questions? All right, uh, we have our townwide cleanup coming up, right? I know we're about 10 days early. Our department started a little early this year, we went out last, uh, actually, it was the beginning of this week, and I think I put 23 guys out on it, and we collected nearly 30 bags of trash, between 20 and 30 bags off of four small locations. All right, um, there's a lot of it out there. Uh, we did our part for right now, we will always continue to do it when we have some downtime. Uh, we are asking if anyone goes out early or needs bags or pickers, you can come here to town hall or come over to the highway department, and then just call us with the location so we can come pick them up. That's just really for the public to know. All right, they can call Highway 628-7474, and we'll come out and pick everything up. All right, thank you.
Thank you for the plug. And thanks for picking up good garbage. Uh, our next six items are from our town engineer, Richard J. Franzetti. First up is hydro raking.
Good evening, board. Uh, in 2021, the engineering department solicited proposals for maintenance for hydro raking at Lake Secor and Sycamore Park, R2021005. The proposal identified that the contract would be effective for three years, with the town of Carmel having unilateral option to renew the contract up to, for two more years, which would be, in this case, 2025 and 2026. Solitude Lake Management was the lowest responsible proposer. They have sufficiently performed the hydro raking services since 2006, and we recommend that the count, the town exercise its option to extend the contract for the next two years. Uh, the costs for 2025 were included in the budget at $5,800 for Lake Secor and $5,800 for Sycamore. The costs for 2025 were included in the budget at $5,800 for Lake Secor and $5,800 for Sycamore, and they will be included in next year's budget at $5,900 for each lake for 2026. That's, any questions? Sorry.
Nope. Okay, contract amendment?
So again, back in 2021, the Engineering Department solicited proposals for maintenance of cemeteries, R2021004. The proposal identified the contract would be effective for three years, and the town having the unilateral option to renew the contract for up to two more years or any portion thereof. Kiko's Landscape was the lowest pos, lowest responsible proposer. They have sufficiently performed the cemetery maintenance since 2014, and we recommend that the town of Carmel exercise its option to extend it for 2025 and 2026. The board approved this renewal in May of 2024. Also, in January of this year, as part of this, Kelly Cemetery in Carmel was deemed abandoned, and the town has assumed ownership of that. Attached there is a quote in the amount of $6,300 for 2025 and $6,300 for 2026, for Kiko's to perform the additional 21 cuts per year. These costs were not included in the 2024 budget, and therefore budget transfers will be needed. So what all this is saying is, we obtained, we're the new proud parents of the Kelly Cemetery in downtown Carmel, and we're adding it on to Kiko's existing contract.
Now, I had asked them to shovel the sidewalk when it snowed. Is that written in there too?
That has been, that was completed this year. It's going to, we have a.
Does it have to be written into the, in the contract? Because you're saying.
So the contract with the cemetery maintenance, I don't believe, has snow shoveling in it, so we're going to, that would be as an as-needed basis. So this year, it was a request, specific request for it.
Yeah.
It's not included in the contract. I'd have to, we'd have to either amend the contract to include snow removal, or have either highway or recreation or somebody else do that work.
Well, highways, highways not going to, able to shovel sidewalks.
So, Rich, this, the last time this went out to bid was in 2021?
Yes.
So we haven't requested any new proposals since 2021?
We have a five-year contract with.
It's up now, right?
So part of, part of what we do is we try to get this, so we have a, we lock in for, for the contracts for about five years. So it'll go back out in two years. We, you guys, me and the board, has already approved the renewal for this contract. This is just an amendment to the contract to include the Kelly Cemetery.
Do you remember, before I came, the county used to give us $18,000, like, to help us with this?
We used to receive funding from the county. We, you know, that, that well has dried, so to speak.
Maybe we use some of that sales tax.
Somebody's here from the county.
Well, I don't know. I don't, I'm not really.
I'm just mentioning.
And you should have left.
Rich, why don't you ask, Rich?
That the previous, I'm just mentioning the previous, the previous county executive administration, I believe, because it could be the county or the town that get.
The cemeteries.
The cemeteries.
Cemeteries.
By default. And I think there was a deal struck with the previous supervisor, but that apparently evaporated when the new kid came. I don't know what happened to that.
The town engineer can't speak to that.
Somebody dropped the ball.
Yeah, apparently I did. So, yeah. Hmm? Yes. Next up, Rich?
So the next one is for the bond return. So on March 26, 2025, the planning board passed a motion recommending the bond return of $26,000 for A and B Holding Tax Map 7617-1-17. This has been inspected by Mike Cornazza and myself, and we recommend that the bond be returned for this project.
This is new construction?
This is over on Teakettle Road, 93 Teakettle Road. It's new construction, yes. It's not completed yet, but the work that was bondable is completed. Next one up is R2019 Storage Tank Rehab Amendment One. The board is aware the Engineering Department solicited proposals from qualified engineering consultants licensed to practice in New York State for storage tank rehab. The project's scope was to develop design plans, prepare and submit permit documents, provide bid assistance, administration for the rehab of the water tanks in the multiple districts across the town. Formal RFPs were received by the Engineering Office on September 7, 2019. The board at that point in time was recommended and accepted Western and Sampson to perform that work. They have requested an amendment to their existing contract, of course, during the course of the design and construction process. Additional out-of-scope work was requested by the town and district operators. In particular, in Carmel Water District Two, was the design and upgrade of the telemetry and control systems at Lindy Drive, Everett Road, and Clapboard Ridge. They are outdated systems that we should upgrade now when we're doing this next tank project, and will be included in it. And trouble eight, Carmel Water Eight, including troubleshooting, evaluation, and coordination of the variable frequency drives at the water treatment plant. There's additional information attached from Western and Sampson. The amendment is for a total cost of $36,250, of which $29,850 will be applied to Carmel Water Two, and the remainder of the $6,400 to Carmel Water Eight. The contract will, Western and Sampson will need to be amended to include this change. There are sufficient funds in the budget for this work, in the budget that we've already pulled together.
Rich, I'm sorry, just back to the bond for, for the $26,000. So you guys are saying to release the entire amount? So there's nothing to do with drainage or roofing, not drainage or pavement or anything like that? Because, I mean, there's been times when we return bonds, but yet something.
The, the items that were identified as part of the performance bond have been completed to the satisfaction of the planning board. So there's work that needs to be done on the site, but it's not performance bond related. It would be CO-related. So Mike wouldn't issue a CO until some of those things are completed.
Okay. And just, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just actually as a point of reference, next door to this property is another property which we looked into. There's some debris on the front lawn, and apparently, I guess, the owner, someone had passed away. There was a dumpster asked for. It was a shed or something was taken down. They didn't pay for the dumpster, so they dumped it right on the front of the property. I spoke to Mike Cornazza with regard to our property maintenance condition law. He's looking into having some bids for that property to be cleaned up. So, has nothing to do with this property, has nothing to do with this owner, but since it's next door, in case anybody was looking or noticed it, and I'm sure the highway department noticed it today when they were on Teakettle Spout Road.
It's a mess.
Yeah, it's a mess. It's been like that for a while. So we weren't sure at first who owned it. Mike did some research. Long story short, we'll be, that'll be coming to the board for permission to clean it up.
Yes, and that's correct. There is debris in front of that, adjacent to the property that we're talking about.
Absolute equipment?
So the Engineering Department has identified some of this equipment as being obsolete and recommend, and request permission to dispose of. We have CDs from 2007 Autodesk, AutoCAD 14, CDs associated and, and associated manuals, ArcPad 6 from 1995, CDs and associated manuals, ArcView 8, CDs and associated manuals, ArcGIS 9, CDs and associated manuals. These are all things from the 90s that have been sitting in the office. They're just CDs that are in there. The one big thing is the IX Fleet Fuel Controller for the Wayne Fueling System. We just, if you board remembers, we just replaced this as we're sitting, this was our fuel control system. We now have it updated. It's something we could probably throw into the e-waste and put it in there when we're done. And we have a Trimble Backpack GPS with associated hardware and CDs. I've asked Superintendent Stern that maybe we can put this on our auction, because that might be something somebody can use, an old-fashioned GPS. People can walk around and identify locations. We pretty much have it on our phones now, but people might still want to use this equipment. And two Olympus D540 Zoom digital cameras, that too would go on the auction block if we could get money, because people collect old cameras. So I'd like to have that requested to be removed. I think I have one more.
Yep. Order two, Treatment Facilities Upgrade Facilities Plan Supplement.
Ah, here it is. I apologize. So at the request of the town board, the Engineering Department circulated RFPs for the reference project, which is the Water Treatment Plant Facility Upgrade Facility Plan Supplemental Report. 21, we sent it to 21 engineering firms on January 31, 2025. A mandatory site visit was held on February 28, and five firms, Arcadis, Bartlett, Liddudis, Delaware Engineering, Rambo, and Woodard and Curran, attended. Formal RFPs were received by the Engineering Office on March 28 from the five firms that attended the mandatory visit. The Engineering Department, in conjunction with town engineering consultant JRFA, had evaluated the submittals. There's an evaluation summary sheet or is attached or is in, is in this email. At this point in time, with the ranking, we recommend Delaware Engineering, they were ranked the highest. Their cost was also the lowest. So they, they hit all the bells and whistles that we had asked for in the RFP, and they were the lowest cost professional engineers had answered. So there are sufficient funds for the 50K, and we recommend that it be awarded to Delaware.
Yeah, I think I'm going to speak with the board after. Rich, I know you and I had spoke. I really would like to bring these guys in, narrow this list down to three, and ask them some questions, because I think that, you know, this, the price sounds great and all, but I really want to see what their vision is. So again, I'm going to speak tonight with the board later, and we'll, we'll reach out to you and figure out where we're going to go from there.
That's okay. Do you need me to come into exactly?
Yeah, I would like for you to come in for like 10, 15 minutes.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, we discussed that also. Definitely come in.
That's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, so the, so the last item is, I, I went out for three quotes to get the roof on the Old Town Hall 40, McCopan Avenue.
Historical.
I included, hmm?
Historical building.
The historical, the Historical Society and Records Building. The local contractor, Richard Barletta Construction, he's over in Lake Cassie, that, who is, I thought, the most responsible and the least expensive. The other responding quote didn't do.
Railing wage.
That's the word. Yep.
Didn't do what?
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage. He's done prevailing wage before. I spoke to successful roof jobs that he's done before. They were satisfied with him, and he did do some government work in Westchester. So I asked the board that next week we vote on authorizing this $21,500 for the roof.
So the only question I had that, that I mentioned to you is the plywood. If there is plywood that's needed, because obviously the roof is not good. So the few things that I see missing on this here is, if they have to take up the bad plywood, the wet plywood, how much are they? No.
Yeah, so they give us.
$90 per sheet.
No, enough for, enough for his. He's 70.
No, this is something different. That's why I'm saying it's.
That's the other quote.
Right. This is the other quote.
No, this is Barletta.
Right, but that's not included on here.
It's not written in there, but we can.
So which one, which one?
This is the one we're going with. This is what was.
And he's done prevailing wage?
He's going to do prevailing wage.
Right.
He's going to. He doesn't usually do it, though.
Right, so what I'm.
Well, he's done government work before, yeah.
Right, so what I'm asking for before next week is to, one, have him put on.
We'll write it in there, and we'll have him that he includes five sheets.
Right, but I, none, it, it could be more than five sheets.
No, no, they include five sheets in, in your job. They, they'll include generally five sheets for free.
Right.
And then 70 for more.
For that.
Every one more.
That he include that he's paying prevailing wages.
Yep.
And what is the warranty on?
It's a 30-year warranty.
Okay, but again, it's not on here.
Yes.
Do you know? So, so he.
Well, that's going to be in the contract. This is just a quote. Rich, is there any way that you can confirm that he's done other government work?
Well, I don't think it necessarily has to be government work.
Well, I can get Terry Towne to tell us that he did the work there.
I, I just.
So who, who was the contractor?
Um, Barletta.
Barletta. Yeah, I can confirm, I know he has, so, but, because I've, I worked with him before. I think he did one of our projects here, but I had to double check. But yeah, I can confirm that.
I just need those few things written on here.
Yes, we'll get a contract.
Yeah, I'll be in the contract.
So you need the proposal updated to include costs for extra sheets and prevailing wage. That's Barletta's.
And put the 30.
And the warranty.
Put the 30-year warranty in it, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. He told me write that in, but I'm not just going to write it in. We'll have him do a new sheet.
We'll get him to do it.
Yeah. Perfect, thank you.
Supervisor, if you don't mind, could you just email me that tomorrow, so I can just follow up and make sure. Kevin said he would do it.
I'll just text him.
That's vice chief of staff.
Vice chief of staff. So, Sal, five minutes, sir?
I want to know one thing. Why is it so hard for something to get done in this town? Like the two-stop signs. Why is it so hard? I got to come here every week? Why is it so hard to convince you? I don't understand it. To make the road a little bit safer, there's another four accidents on that road, okay? And I got to come here every week for two-stop signs, and I can't get nothing to agree on it. That's not, that's not right.
There was four more accidents between the end of the road at Union Valley.
Yeah.
And the other stop sign? There was four accidents in that short stretch?
Yeah.
When, when were the accidents?
So speeding from Horton Drive all the way.
You're saying past the stop sign, Sal? After you will pass the stop sign? Not in between the stop sign that we just put in Union Valley?
Doesn't matter. It's on the same road. It's a town road for safety, and I can't get two more stop signs. It's a crime.
No, no, Councilman Lougo, the, the question I'm asking is, were the accidents between?
I don't care where they were. They were on the same road.
That's relevant to it.
They were on the same road.
If there's an accident on the other end of the road, how does this?
It's about speed.
Sal, how does a stop sign?
And you're not making the road safe.
How does a stop?
You're not doing it. You're not doing it. You're wrong. You're not doing it.
If the highway department and the police think it needs another stop sign, then before it goes in.
I live in this town for 40 years. For 40 years, and I can't get two stop signs. And I got to come here every week? It's a crime, and it's on you people. Yeah, look at me, it's on you. 40 years I'm in this town, and I've done more for the sports in this town than anyone, okay?
Yep.
All my time, and people's time to help me. Two stop signs I can't get. It's a crime, and it's on you people, okay? I got to come every week. Can't talk like a gentleman, because nothing gets done here. Nothing.
All right, if there, if there's a need, if there's a need.
It's all about speed.
If there's a need for a stop sign, then the highway and the police will ask us to put stop signs up in that location.
We need on Horton Drive. Listen, on Bloomer's Road, the kids come with their bikes, right?
Uh-huh.
I seen it. Cars stop, let the kids go to the bike path. We can't do that on Horton.
Okay.
Because the cars will go too fast. That's a safety issue on you people.
And if you put too many stop signs up, then people will ignore them because.
How do you know that? How do you know that? You didn't do it.
Because that's what happens.
No, you didn't do it. How do you know that? Put them up. Put them up. I got to come here every week?
Yeah.
It's bullshit.
Sorry.
It is. Make the road safe. Do something. You don't want to do nothing. It's a crime, and it's on you people. I'm telling you right now, Mike, it's on you, and I'm not going away. I'm telling you right now. Two-stop signs, they ain't hard. It's not hard.
If they're warranted, we'll put them up.
What do you mean if they're warranted?
If they're warranted, we'll put them up. If there's accidents between that stop sign and
It's about speed. Hey, that's the starting line, Mike, okay?
And then they stop at the stop sign?
Come over one day and sit down on the road, and you'll see what happens, okay? It's not bull. It's the truth. Do something, and I'm not going away. I'll tell you right now.
The police chief is here, and they'll ask him to sit, I'll ask him to have a car sit over there and take a look. And if they think it's warranted, we will put a stop sign up. If it's not, we won't, and then you'll be back.
Oh, the chief is saying he has.
Okay.
Chief, you guys have, you guys have posted up on that road?
That's correct. We've done travels. Forty years I've been here.
Chief, could you come up, please, and explain?
In the past year, we've done at least two traffic surveys in that area. The one warranted the stop sign at Bloomer, which we put in. Highway Department put in stop signs. They put in the stop lines, the stop-ahead signs. The Police Department put in a traffic radar sign, and also the stealth traffic data collector right by Horton. I'll give the board the results of those tests. Bucks Hollow and Horton, sir. Yes, yes. And as I've told the board before, the federal guidelines, we can't put in stop signs to control speed. So we can look at other speed mitigation ideas, but as far as the stop sign goes, the sightlines there have been studied. They're fine. They weren't fine at Bloomer. That's why we put the stop sign in there. But at Horton, right now
With the data that you have, that you guys have recorded, have you, do you see a significant amount of speeding taking place on that road?
No.
They shared it with us.
Come and sit by my house. I'll let you know.
Like I told the board, we'll provide the traffic data information that we collated.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks.
But that solves no problem. That's it, Mike. You let it go.
We're not letting it go. We studied it.
You studied it? I'm going to sit by my house, and then they'll study it.
Okay. So we're going to have our Shredded Event Saturday, April 19, at the Geary Inline Memorial Rink. That's across from the Hopeak Fire Department. Saturday, the 19th of April, from 9 to 12. Townwide Cleanup, which the Highway Department already did some fine work for us. Thank you. Townwide Cleanup is April 21st through the 25th. Again, as the Superintendent said, you can call the Highway Department, 628-7474, or the Town Hall, 628-1500, extension 139. Ask about getting pickers, reflective vests, and orange garbage bags to put the trash in. And if you let us know where you're going to be collecting, then the Highway Department will thankfully pick up the bags after you're done. And then we're having our e-waste, May 3rd, from 9 to 12, across from Town Hall on Mud Pond. So e-waste is May 3, and shredded is April 19. That's all I have.
Yep. And then this Saturday, April 12, is the Easter Eye Hunt. It is going to be at the Airport Park Fields, which is off of Hill Street this year. 11 o'clock is lunch, provided by the Lake Mahopek Rotary Club. The hunt begins exactly at 12 o'clock, so please don't come at 12 or 5, because the fields will be wiped clean with all of the little ones running through there. At 12:00 p.m. to 1, it's the Claim the Prizes, DJ's photos with the bunny and more. It is for residents only, and it's for children through second grade. If you want to volunteer, please contact Nina or someone at the Recreation Department, 845-628-7888.
And Supervisor Kazari will be in the bunny suit, right?
Oh, the bunny.
There's no bunny suit, Councilman Kearns.
The bunny is the
There's a real bunny.
I have one thing.
Bunny's a person.
Many of you guys know I am a big supporter of Relay for Life. Councilman Lougo and myself are hosting a softball tournament at Kamara Park, May 4, to raise funds for Relay for Life. The event's going to start at 8:00 a.m. We're looking for teams. We have some posting on Facebook. We'll post it maybe on our website here to see if anyone's interested in playing. We're going to have food trucks, inflatables, vendors. It's going to be a great time. Come out and support a great cause.
And also, a big shout-out to Stephen Tannalos. This was his idea from years ago. He kind of brought Councilman Kearns and myself on, and we figured we'd help him out. And then also, April 27, we are doing our first cleanup trail walk at Vols Park. And the Dad's Group, Dad's Always Doing Something, will be helping Carmel Parks and Rec put that together. We're sponsoring it, and we're bringing the kids on the trail to clean up the trails, and we're going to have a scavenger hunt. So all fun things coming to the town of Carmel.
So get a motion to go to executive session. We have, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Good night. See you at 19.